Periodically, when topics of interest come up that we feel the public would like some more information about. So this evening, our topic forum will be the Common Core. We will break the evening up into three parts. There are three parts of our presentation. And after each section of our presentation, we will then have public conversation. I will try to keep time so that we get through everything we want to talk about in the next hour and a half. I will ask you to raise your hand and be recognized before you speak. And welcome to the Common Core, and we look forward to your input and your participation. I'm going to turn this over to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Angela Beck. She will begin the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl. I'm thrilled to see this many people here tonight. And I'm hoping that we can have a good discussion around the Common Core standards. We're going to start with the goals for this evening's discussion. We're going to start by presenting a background on the Common Core. For those of you, some of you may be familiar with how the Common Core came to be. Other people, that may be new information for you. So we want to give you a little historical background. We're going to provide some information about how the Newburyport Public Schools are using the Common Core standards. And we're, hopefully, will answer specific questions that have been asked regarding the standard and state assessments. We're really separating that out in tonight's presentation. Because the Common Core State Standards are one aspect of what we're talking about. But a lot of the questions that have come forward really focus more on assessment, which is the assessment that may be associated to the Common Core State Standards. We're going to, we're going to try to define those separately for you tonight so that we can hopefully add some clarity around those two components. And then, of course, we want to engage you, the public, in discussion around this topic. All right. For a little bit of background, we're going to talk about how this came to be. This is a basic timeline of how the Common Core were put into effect. So in the spring of 2009, as you can see, the Governor and Commissioners signed the Memorandum of Understanding around the Common Core State Standards. And that allowed the development of these standards to begin. During the summer of '09 and this, through the spring of 2010, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is our Massachusetts Department of Ed, and local educators started to provide some feedback on the drafts to the standards. And then final versions of the Common Core State Standards were completed in June of 2010. So that was after several drafts had gone out, open for feedback, and that was taken into consideration. In July 2010, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Massachusetts Business Alliance for Education, sorry about all of these abbreviations, but it was hard to write all of those out and get the timeline on there. They studied the draft. And the Massachusetts Business Alliance for Education, if you're not familiar with them, they are a group of business people who work with the Department of Education to try to ensure that we're preparing students properly to become a part of the world of work upon graduation. And then, the Board for Elementary and Secondary Education that was working specifically on this project adopted the Common Core State Standards with an option for additions. Every state that adopted had an option for a certain percentage of the standard that they could add to. And here in Massachusetts, the Department of Education decided to add early childhood standards. Because we never had those in Massachusetts. So that was the component of the Common Core that they decided they wanted to add. And then, in December 2010, the Board for the Department of Secondary, I mean Elementary and Secondary Education, adopted the new frameworks that incorporated the Common Core. Because the Common Core are really for English Language Arts and Literacy and Math. So they're not all content areas. They're two content areas. And then, the Board for Element, for Early Education and Care, which is the BEEC, adopts the pre-K standards. Which leads us to 2011, when our Department of Education adopted the Common Core standards as part of the Massachusetts frameworks. And that's an important thing to know. The reason they did it was to ensure that students are college and career ready. So Massachusetts already had a framework with standards in every content area, and we still do. What the change was, was that the Common Core in the areas of ELA, Literacy, and Math replaced the standards that were the Massachusetts standards in those areas. So this, it was merged. And in your handout, if, I hope that everybody has a handout. In your handout, you have a complete history here of how this came to be in the state of Massachusetts. And for some of you who enjoy the history of things, there's a little bit there for you to read. For others, you may want to just say, "Oh, good to know," and reference it at another time. Yeah, we want to go back.
Did you want to play the video?
Yeah, we want to go back. Go back.
One more.
There you go. All right. I'm going to show you, I'm going to walk you through a short video. It's a three-minute video that really kind of talks about the vision of the, of the Common Core. There you go.
Like it or not, life is full of measuring sticks. How smart we are, how fast we are, how well we can, you know, compete. But up until now, it's been pretty hard to tell how well kids are competing in school and how well they're going to do when they get out of school. We like to think that our education system does that. But when it comes to learning what they really need to be successful after graduation, is a girl in your neighborhood being taught as much as her friend over in the next one? Is a graduating senior in, say, St. Louis, as prepared to get a job as the graduate in Shanghai? Well, it turns out, the answer to both of these questions is no. Because for years, states have been setting different standards for what students should know and be able to do at each grade level. That's making it too hard to know if our kids are really doing well enough overall and if they can really compete for a job someday. What we really need are clear goals. That's where the Common Core State Standards come in. They're like a total sea change in education. Consistent, strong, clear benchmarks for English Language Arts and Math. Here's how it works. You can think of kindergarten through 12th grade like a giant staircase. Each step is a skill your child needs to learn before stepping up to the next one. But right now, too many kids aren't really confident with like, two plus two before they have to move on to two times two. We need more focus on the skills that help them move up the stairs, or they can slip up and fall behind. And there's another problem. What if everyone's stairs were made at different heights? Well, here we go again. They are. So, a boy in Seattle who's rocking an A in English Literature could be getting a C on his Chicago friend's staircase. Oops. We need to create consistent steps in education, too. So first, each standard creates a landing on the staircase. A stop along the way as your child heads toward high school graduation. Each stop is a chance for every parent and teacher to focus on the skills their students are supposed to know at that step, no matter the zip code, language, or race. And more importantly, each standard makes sure all students are learning what they need to know to get to graduation and beyond. Because something like counting to 100 leads to understanding dollars and cents, which eventually leads to understanding how to manage a budget. Secondly, the standards are consistent from school to school, and they match up against international standards, too. Now we know how we're doing compared to just about everyone. So even though local communities will still design their own curriculum, with the same rules, everybody can compete on the same kind of staircase. But standards aren't learning. That's why we need teachers, parents, and students to help make that happen by working together to help kids meet these standards. The world's getting more and more competitive every day. But now, when our kids get to the top of their staircase, they can have way more options on where their life goes from there. Clear goals, confident, well-prepared students. That's the Common Core State Standards.
I think it's important for us to acknowledge that this is the premise of the Common Core State Standards. It was really to try to equal the playing field a little bit. It's not a philosophy that everybody agrees with. And I know that, you know, there's been a lot in the press about this with different perspectives around this thinking. But that is the foundation. As we start to look at what students are doing in other parts of the world, and when we even compared what students were doing in our own country, in other parts of the United States, there were huge variations in the way students were learning. And we started to see that the United States was losing its competitive edge in the international market. And we, we live in a global society now. It is essential that we address the learning needs of our kids so that they can be successful in the world that we live in. So, you know, we recognize that there are several perspectives on this issue. What we're going to try to do today is present to you how it's impacting Newburyport Public Schools, how the state of Massachusetts has addressed this through, through the Board of Education here. Okay? Okay. So, some of the positive aspects and intents, intent of the Common Core State Standards were that they provide guidelines for students in ELA and in Math. These are learning guidelines. That, but it's important to understand that these are the standards, these are the guidelines. But districts develop curriculum and instructional plans. So although the state has adopted the Common Core State Standards, the state is not telling you what the curriculum needs to be or how you need to teach it. Standards are focused on college and career readiness for all students. And when a test is associated to the Common Core State Standards, the information reported to the district from that assessment will provide data on how well our students are doing both nationally and internationally. And that's data we haven't had to date. Now, there's a lot of questions and concerns. The slide before this was about the standards. Many of the questions and concerns that we've been hearing are really about the assessment. And so, questions and concerns about PAR. PAR is the proposed assessment associated with the Common Core for the state of Massachusetts. That decision, that final decision has not been made yet. But, we admit, within the school district, that, you know, there is uncertainty with the exam itself and how it will be implemented. It's brand new. Last year, we piloted small groups of students at several grade levels with this test. But we just got a little glimpse of what this test would be. It's computer-based test versus paper and pencil. How will the results be reported? We don't have all the information on exactly how that's going to play out. Will administering PAR increase the achievement gap between subgroups? Subgroups like our English Language Learners, our low-income students, our special education students, and the aggregate, all of our students. When or if is PAR going to be given? You know, we're all kind of hanging on, waiting to hear if it's going to happen, and if it is, when. And then, the biggest, big question I know we have internally in the district is, have we been given enough time to shift our instructional practices, including the way we integrate technology into instruction and assessments in the district so that students will be prepared to take PAR when it does come? And we're going to talk more about that. Another question we've heard is, do we have to implement the Common Core State Standards? And we do. As long as it's part of the improved Massachusetts frameworks, we do have to implement. And this is the regulation around that. So I just wanted you to have that so that you could see that's, you know, a part of our obligation as a public school system to do so. Okay, and we thought we'd stop here, and we'd take a little time if we have any questions or if people would like to discuss anything about this portion of the presentation. So let's focus on the history and the implementation.
Yes, Mary.
Hi. I guess, a few questions. You went over the history of how we got here, but I didn't hear you say the link to the Race to the Top funding. That's why the state signed on to Common Core? Because there was funding?
Race to the Top was a piece of the whole initiative. So, states that were a part of the Race to the Top grant, when Race to the Top funding, that was part of the agreement of that grant was that you would, if you signed on to the Race to the Top grant and you accepted money, you were a school district who did that, that you were also accepting the Common Core State Standards with that. And the state accepted that, too. The state. It wasn't just the district. Because even for those districts who did not take Race to the Top money, they're still, they still need to follow the Common Core State Standards. Because once the state adopted it, then all schools in the state need to implement it.
Right, but at the state level, it was.
The state, yes.
You signed on to that. And then you, in the history part, you mentioned that not all content area. We're currently doing ELA, Literacy, and Math, but Science and other core subjects are added on in a year or so.
Not to the Common Core. There is, there's, there are new standards that have been accepted by the Department of Education for Science. And these are called Next Generation Science Standards. And there are many states that have adopted the Next Generation Science Standards, but they are not part of the Common Core. They're separate. They will not be tested in PAR at this time.
That'll be a different test?
They'll continue, Science is going to continue to be tested under MCAS for now. Because those science standards aren't going to be fully implemented for several years. There'll be a gradual implementation, much like there was for the Common Core. And so, at this time, all we know about the assessment associated with those science standards is that it will remain MCAS for this time.
But you wouldn't have kids take MCAS and PAR?
Well, if the state determines that that's how we're assessing. Currently, you know, we're going to get into more about assessment in a little while, but currently, we are testing on our high-stake test for the, for the state, which is currently MCAS. We are testing Literacy, Math, and Science. Those are the three content areas that we test. And, and for now, Science will remain MCAS, even if PAR is implemented.
That sounds like a lot of tests for kids. But I have lots more questions, so I'll let other people go, but I, with the different sections useful.
Yes, Dr. Orlando.
I have two questions that deal with what's been presented so far. If you're going to address them elsewhere, please defer to them. So the first is, in your questions and concerns on PAR, you indicated as your last bullet, there were some district concerns about the ability, institute necessary changes in a timely manner. Is someone in the room going to address that, and if so, when? The second question deals with, as the cartoon video that you alluded to, a great deal of the Common Core was designed to level the playing field, or as they say, and maybe decrease the achievement gap amongst individual groups of students. Is anyone in the room prepared to discuss the data that substantiates that that has been tested for the Common Core standard?
Do you want to address them now?
We'll address them now.
No, addressing now, okay. All right. I'm going to start with your first question, Dr. Orlando. Our concerns come from the timing of the implementation. I think that we've been working towards this for some time now. As you know, you know, the Common Core State Standards were adopted in 2011. It's now 2014. So this is not new news to us, that the Common Core State Standards are coming. They're here, and we've been working to transition towards, to them over the last several years. So from a curriculum perspective, we've been working very hard to realign our curriculum so that what we're teaching in our classroom is addressing the Common Core. The component that we're wondering about the pacing on is really around the assessment, is around PAR. And, you know, we just got a huge infusion of technology in the district through the building projects. But before that, we were really lacking the kind of technology that it takes to integrate well with technology and to even provide a computer-based platform for assessments. And if that's what we're moving to in a test like PAR or in another test, if it doesn't end up being PAR, we are, you know, we're working rapidly to try to catch up in that area to make sure that our students are as prepared as we, as possible, to face that kind of platform. So the question comes more around how we're going to be prepared for the technology aspect and our practice around assessments, implementing a computer-based test. We do some of that now, but it's certainly not our everyday practice.
The achievement gap question, I'm not sure that the, the standards were implemented in some states earlier than Massachusetts. We could look to those states to see if their achievement gap is shortening. But I think that the achievement gap nationally will be easier to compare because we're looking at similar standards, similar assessments. In the past, Massachusetts has always been ranked very highly for our rigorous standards and our rigorous assessments. And other states fell in a different line with that. I think for those states, it's a bigger jump up to these standards, whereas for us, it wasn't as much of a transition to them.
I guess the concern I have, and I'm not sure anyone can answer it, so that if you accept the standards and are having some difficulty in implementing the technology required from the standards, or anything in standards with respect to implementation, and the students in the district aren't doing well for whatever reason, is there any protective mechanism or any guarantee that they can be achieving in the manner in which they currently achieve? Which, on a detailed analysis over many years of engagement on my part, I would say, the Newburyport Schools do reasonably well. And introducing something like this with some of the implementation difficulties, I have few concerns of the students currently coming through the system who may not, who may suffer from the difficulties in developing the necessary needs to bring forth the Common Core curriculum as they go through the district. You know, what you see now in elementary school may not manifest itself six years later until they get to high school. And I don't know if there are answers to that question, but I would ask any of the other parents in the room, because my kids are pretty much close to the end of the road, what some of their concerns are for, and if anyone in the room is able to answer them. To say that data on the achievement gap is unknown, okay, it's unknown, tell us that. But those are some of the concerns that I've seen sort of anchored around in the circles I hang out in.
Well, one thing I just want to respond to about that, that question is, you know, we're working hard to meet the needs of all of our students, whether we're operating under the Common Core, whether we're operating on the, under the old Massachusetts standards.
And I'm not saying that you aren't.
Okay, no, no, I'm not, that's not a defensive statement. I'm just trying to make the point that, you know, we're working to accommodate our students' learning needs, no matter what the standards are that are providing the guidance for our curriculum. So this, moving to the Common Core hasn't changed that at all. I think, you know, we want to keep clear the separation between what the standards, the implications of the standards and the implications of a new assessment associated to those standards. And so I just, I just want to be careful with that. Because I know, the standards aren't, you know, we've, we've operated under standards ever since every form, you know, for a long time now. We've been operating under sta, under standards. The Common Core are the newest iteration of the standards for the state. The state has had, you know, standards for many years that have been guiding the curriculum and instruction of districts.
Dave?
I can, I'll speak to your point real quick, and I do have a question for the, for you. One of the exciting things about the achievement gap when we talk about it, because I don't think anything's been around long enough to get a strong measure of it. But I can tell you that I've now worked in a wide range of school districts, including this one for a little bit. And to know that the same conversation is happening in the South Bronx, and Balden, and Bedford, New York, and Newburyport, and for all those kids, teachers are working to get them to a place of high expectations can only yield better results than the endless discussions of the fact that those kids aren't going to get there. So, I'm not sure what the measurement's going to play out. But the starting line, knowing that we're inviting everybody onto the racetrack and we're getting everybody into the game, is the exciting part about the achievement gap for me. Because until, until we do that, there's no chance of everybody achieving. So I have a lot of hope in that, in that sense as well. And that goes for even in the school district, that at some level, the idea of an honors course or an AP course isn't going to go away because we're only going to expect all kids to step it up a notch. I mean, the other piece of the research that was not there is the fact that college completion rates have fallen through the floor. And I think from, the last I saw, it was about 60 or 70% of kids entering college are graduating now within six years. Not four, but six. And a lot of that has to do with underwhelming academic expectations in K-12 throughout the 80s and 90s. And so, getting kids more used to reading things at a higher level, all kids, is a pretty exciting thing. And so, we'll have to see if it plays out well, because there's still dramatic discrepancies. Don't get me wrong, but it's nice to see everybody online. My question for a district like Newburyport, which, from my perspective, starts with a pretty strong foundation, an interested parent base, an educated population, who start from a really nice spot. Is the other pieces of Common Core and Next Generation Standards really invites us to stretch a bit? And to get away from the basal readers and the worksheets and those sorts of things and enter into project-based learning, something more closer to like, an international baccalaureate degree than an AP class? Much more exciting. The Next Generation Standards is going to have us talking about engineering classes and those sorts of things, where the kids are really being pushed to think for themselves and answer big questions and write those big questions and explore. So I guess, I guess that's my question. Because, Indian said, it's really easy to slip into more testing, more worksheets, more test prep. And that's, that's kind of scary.
We're going to go into more details to what we're doing in the district for ELA and for Math. And we can address some of that more specifically then.
Let's take one more question, because I would like to move on. Yes?
Yeah, I have a question. Just, you've mentioned a couple times that you started off with the history by saying that the state does not mandate, mandates the standards, but does not mandate the curriculum. And you've mentioned several times that the district has been working to develop a curriculum to meet the standards. So I'm, my question is, is this a common one? So my question, I guess it's two parts. Are you going to speak to the curriculum that the, that the district has developed? And in particular, I'd like to learn more about how the Engage New York curriculum has been chosen, because with three kids in middle school, Mullen School and elementary school, I can tell you I'm singularly unimpressed with the math curriculum. So I'd like, especially the fact that there's no textbook for the students at the older grade, which I find to be a real problem. So I'd like to learn more about that. And then, I guess I'm getting ahead of myself, but also whether there's any data in terms of, in terms of whether or not somebody has measured that particular curriculum for special education, because that is one of the areas that I think has, so is going to prove a real problem, given the language intensity of the math curriculum.
You've segwayed us perfectly into the next section.
And I, and I was going to say, that's, that is the next section of the presentation. So unless anybody has a burning issue, I'd like to move on to that, because I think it'll make things clearer as to what the impact is in Newburyport. So I'd like to move us on, if that's okay with everyone?
All right. I'm going to start this off just by giving us a really quick overview of the difference between standards, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Because those are all, it, it's a cycle. There are, each component is an important piece, but they're each different. So hopefully this will help. You know, the standards are only one component of building a system of curriculum instruction and assessment. And the standards do not dictate how content is taught or what resources are used for that instruction. So I mentioned that earlier. Whoops. What happened there? I'm just going to open, you have this document in front of you. And this is just a really nice graphic. It is, you know, a quick overview of how this works. So, you know, basically, the standards describe educational objectives, what students should know and be able to do. That's what the standards tell us. And they tell us that they should know or be able to do this by a certain point, you know, by the end of a course, by the end of a grade level. But they don't define what kind of teaching practice should be attached to this, or what kind of curriculum occasionally, this, this document will tell you, or assessment, when we think about our classroom assessment, they don't dictate our classroom assessment. But if we think about a more high-stake test, like our M test, that may be directly associated. Okay? Uh, whoops. That's okay. I think it might be, um, is it this one? Yeah?
Just X out of the, see that box?
Yes. I think it just fell behind the other one. I don't know why I did that either. Oh. Sorry. I'll talk from the handout, maybe you can find that there, Emily. The next section is curriculum, and the curriculum is something, as I've said, that we've been working on aligning here in the district. So curriculum decisions are made locally, they're made by districts and schools and teachers, and they lay out how the students will master the standards. So how are you going to approach these standards? And what materials are going to be used to try to reach those standards? And then, which leads to instruction, and then the teachers, this is, you know, where the teachers are responsible for adapting the curriculum and providing instruction, identifying good research-based teaching practices that allow for good instruction and the implementation of that curriculum, and the resources that help support that instruction. And then assessments, you really try to use a wide variety of assessments that measure and document academic readiness, the learning process, and skill acquisition and, for students. So each one of these components is an important part, but none of them really are standalone. And I'd like to introduce Emily Russen, our literacy coordinator, and Liz Kinsley, our STEM coordinator, and they're going to walk you through a little bit of the work that's happening in the district around implementing the Common Core State Standards.
I'm wondering with our time, do you want to, do you want us to go through assessment and then do questions? Is there time? A lot less of her?
No, I'm just trying to make sure you get through all of your presentation, and then we can have a, a nice discussion, so.
Okay, great. Right. Yes, so I am the literacy coordinator for pre-K through grade eight, and I'll just generally talk through some of the shifts that we're making at the district level. So focus, coherence, and rigor are three themes that the Common Core standards speak to. And focus is on making sure that we go deeply with each skill. So we have in ELA, we have ten anchor standards that go through each grade level. So if you were looking at standard one, you could look at that in pre-K through grade, you know, eight, twelve, and it would read the same theme, but at a, at an age-appropriate level. And, and we go deeply with that. So instead of having numerous standards, we have ten. When we unpack those ten, we, we realize there are many layers within each one. And, and the guideline is on 21st century skills. So making sure that these are standards that are going to apply for all of our students to be college and career-ready. Coherence, I already spoke about how they build across the grades, and there's a vertical articulation throughout the grades. And then the rigor is something we've really focused on a lot in our schools, and what is rigor? And what's developmentally appropriate rigor? And when, when we're asking students to do some of these high-level skills, how can they show us that they, that they can do that? So that's a theme that you'll see throughout all the standards. We can go to the next line. Here's an example of how the current standards read in the left column, and how our previous Massachusetts standards read for the same topics. These topics were around using information from illustrations and maps, photographs in a text to gain understanding. So that's something that we do a lot of in nonfiction text. And in a book such as Surprising Sharks, which we would read with maybe our second graders, there might be a diagram of a shark, and on that diagram, you'll see some captions, you see some labels, and you, and you realize this is actually very important to understanding this book. I'm not just going to look at the picture and look for the next page of print. So we teach how to do that, and we have always taught how to do that. And those were in our previous standards in a couple different places. You can see they're synthesized a little bit more in the 2011. But then the third column speaks about what is determined by our teachers, by our district. So the standards give us guidelines, and then the hard work is figuring out how to do it. So in our district, we use a balanced literacy model, which means that we use texts that are appropriate for our readers at all levels. And then, so that's through our guided reading, our shared reading, our whole group reading. So our teachers are still selecting books appropriate for their students. Completing a performance task, what text to use, what skills to focus on, the teacher still has to select all of that with guidance from the district. And which activities should the students use to practice this skill? How should I differentiate this to meet the needs, all the needs in my classroom? One shift that we'll talk about in a minute is that in this, in the new standards, it mentions not only having students read exactly at their reading level, but also stretching them a bit beyond their level, so that they are always accessing grade level curriculum or above. And that might be through a read aloud, if that's appropriate in the classroom, students can understand a book read to them easier than reading it themselves, but could be discussing at a higher level. It might be through having a class book that the teacher scaffolds with a lot more support. So, so we're, we're wanting our students to stretch a bit from beyond where they currently So the new standards, you may have heard about the integrated model of literacy. So still foundational principles of learning to read and write are taught in an ELA classroom, especially moving towards upper elementary and into middle school grades. That ownership of literacy crosses beyond the English classroom walls and into social studies, science, math, everywhere, and, and into high school. So not just middle school, but at high school as well. So that makes everybody all of a sudden a teacher of literacy, but it turns out they always were anyway, because they had to write lab reports and they had to read primary sources in history. And these were things that all of our educators have always been working towards. They're working more collaboratively to, to do that now, and we have standards to guide us. So it does not replace the history standards, the science standards at all, it's just adding these literacy components to them. Maybe go to the next one. Oh, I wanted to share some things.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
I brought books, and I want to make sure I share them. So in your packets, you have a few documents that talk about some of the key shifts. One is called the Parents Backpack Guide. In all honesty, you're not going to see these things in the backpack, but I wanted to illustrate to you things that you will expect to see in a, in a student's classroom. You might see some evidence of this in the backpack, but I think not, it's not so much about homework, but about what's happening in the classroom. So what is shifting for the students? They're now reading more nonfiction. In our standards, they refer to it as informational text that carries a broader lens. And when we hear nonfiction, some of us get really excited and some of us yawn. And I wanted to ensure to you that in our district, our engagement is very important to student learning, and we select texts that we know that will engage our students at the youngest ages. We have an informational text, I'll leave these up here if you want to look at them, about Apollo 11, moonshot, and it has graphs and tons of facts that are just really engaging. This is a book that is in the appendix B of the Common Core as an exemplar text for informational. Surprising Sharks. This is another key shift in our standards, which is that we may not just read one book of fables, we might be comparing and contrasting The Tortoise and the Hare across three different versions. This could be done as young as second or third grade. So it's still engaging, still age-appropriate, but we're using multiple texts to show different authors' points of view. A Butterfly is Patient is a beautiful informational text that does not have captions. You're really just reading about, about butterflies, but you're learning incredible vocabulary along the way. A Medieval Feast, Lincoln Tells a Joke, you know, so, so some of our informational texts aren't as dry as maybe we're thinking when we hear nonfiction. We do want students to be able to access primary sources and dry texts, because we know those are gateway texts to college. Unfortunately, we have to know how to read those texts. And that is where reading closely comes in, in our standards. So when we are faced with a difficult text, what do we do to change our perspective of that text? We slow down, we go back, we mark it up, we ask questions, we discuss it. Those are all strategies we're teaching our students to become independent readers of difficult texts. And we want students writing about what they read, not only discussing about what they read. So infusing writing about reading, which we've also been doing for quite a while. That's all I wanted to share before math.
Do you want me to pass those around?
I think they have them in, oh, the books? Sure.
And that way, you'll have those guys in the window?
I just need them back. Oh, and I wanted to en, uh, one more thing, sorry, that the literature is still just as prevalent in our standards. I brought two of the classics, Mr. Puffer's Penguins, Charlotte's Web. Those are still very much ingrained in our teaching, it's just that we've increased the amount of nonfiction. Typically, in elementary grades across the nation, there's been a bias towards narrative, it's stories and elementary seem to go hand in hand. And what research showed was that really we should be starting with nonfiction at the youngest ages as well. So, I really am done now, thank you.
So in math, we see the same, similar shifts as what we saw in ELA. So this is an example that is similar to what the ELA standards were. So we see what the new standard is in the Common Core around fractions, and then we see what the old 2001, 2004 math standards were. So we see that there's a little bit of a different focus, it goes a little bit deeper. So what we found with the new Common Core is it's much deeper and less wide. So when we look at the standards at each grade level, we're looking at a progression which is very different than what we have seen before. So for instance, in first grade, the kids are working on adding and subtracting. They start the first day of school looking at the relationship between adding and subtracting, and they look at making number bonds, which is adding one and four equals five, and so they put those number bonds together. And then they work all year, whether it's in measurement, or whether it's in using, you know, basic story problems. So they're looking at it pretty much all year long, so the expect, expectations going through first grade are that kids will be fluent with adding and subtracting, up to a hundred fluent, up to twenty, but, and then understanding the relationship in higher, higher as they go through. And similar to ELA, where the teachers are determining how they're meeting the standards. So these are some ways that our teachers are meeting the standards. They use whole group instruction, and so they have an application problem that they're doing direct instruction, and they use manipulatives and models all throughout. And they're, the kids are getting really fluent in using certain models and manipulatives depending on what the grade level is and what the concepts are. And then kids are doing small group problem solving, and as part of that, they're doing a lot more of explaining how they got their solutions, and using different ways of defending their, their solutions and communicating those solutions and ideas to other people in their class or to their teacher. They're completing much more multi-step assessments and performance tasks. So even at a, at the younger grade levels, they're doing more word problems, and that's where the literacy piece does come in. So we're looking at increasing their literacy skills as well as their math skills. And so that's a way that there's been a lot of scaffolding and differentiating that goes along with kids that, especially younger kids, that are not really literate yet and that need more help. And so sometimes math is a really important entry point for those kids to develop good literacy skills as well. And then the teacher determines what skills that we're focusing on, so how we're going to be able to teach those skills, and how we're going to do that throughout the grade level, and looking at the coherence between what the expectations are for kids coming into my grade level, and what the expectations are for the kids that are going on to the next grade level. We spent a lot of time last summer doing some vertical math work, so that the teachers were really, became really fluent in understanding how the, the Common Core standards moved from one level to the next, so that they were, they became very comfortable understanding what the exit expectations were for their kids, and how their kids are coming into the, their grade levels. So, and they're also deciding what activities students should do to practice whatever the skill is. So sometimes at certain grade levels, you'll see more homework than others, or you'll see repeated practice, which is something that you'll see on that backpack piece that Emily talked about in a, a little earlier, and I'll talk about it. Emily talked about a little earlier, and I'll talk about it a little bit more with math. And then how to differentiate and extend. So it's true that not all of our kids have the same background, and not all of the kids have the same set of skills when they come to us. And so one thing that's really great about some of the new materials that we're using in math this year is that there are models that the kids are using, that the teachers are using, and they're well-designed to not overwhelm kids with 17 different models, which is some of the work that we found when we were doing the pilots, and when we were looking at a bunch of different curriculum materials or programs, was that a lot of them were similar to what we were using in class before, which is they had a lot of different models, but the kids were able to choose which model they were using, whereas what we're doing now is it's more sort of directed towards using a specific model, and then being able to use that as they go through and apply it to different concepts. Anybody who wants more information about the Engage New York curriculum that we're working on, or the program that we're using, we don't really have enough time to go too deeply into it, but I'm more than happy to meet with anyone who wants to talk in more detail or wants more resources. Our webpage should be up by the end of this month, and so then there'll be much more resources that we can use that will help us to help parents to understand how it's going, and what resources you can use that go along with that as well. So these are the standards for math practice and math content. So the math practice standards are based on these things, and we'll see that it runs all the way through from preschool, pre-K, all the way up into high school, that these math practice standards are important for students to be able to understand math and be able to practice math. So we see that it's important for them to make sense of problems and persevere in solving them, that they're able to reason abstractly and quantitatively, that they can construct variable arguments and critique the reasoning of others, they can model with mathematics and use appropriate tools, attend to precision, and look for an use of structure, and look for and express regularly and repeated reasoning. So that's just a lot of mathematics speak, but we'll see that those go through all of the practice standards, all of the content standards in math, all the way through. And then I'll just briefly ask you to, this is the other side of, this is in your packet, which is what Emily was talking about, and then on the back of it are just some of the shifts in math. So you'll see that it's very similar in terms of what Emily was talking about with the ELA, but we're talking in math about working on fewer topics, but going much deeper. We're looking at building on learning from year to year, and that was really the important work that we did over the summer, that the teachers really started to understand clearly how the progression went from understanding just a one-to-one correspondence in preschool all the way through to pre-calculus and calculus in high school. So those things progress in a logical way, and so we looked really carefully as a group, as a pre-K to 12 continuum, and how those standards really were so important that the kids had the foundations as they went through. So, and that's the coherence piece. And then you'll see that your students will spend more time practicing and memorizing math facts. Your kids will understand why math works and be asked to talk about and prove their understanding. There's a lot of debate and a lot of discussion about what your strategies were. And so, you know, I might not have the most efficient strategy, but it's still a strategy that works for me. So we can talk a little bit about why certain strategies work, and then that's a place where we can extend. So some kids that are really strong in mathematics, then there's a lot of extension that can go with that. So those kids can work on problems that are maybe a little bit more difficult, or problems that ask you to do several steps as you go through. And then your student will be asked to use math in real-world situations, all of the problems that the kids are using, all of the materials that the kids are using as they go through and become more proficient, then they're asked to solve real-world problems. They're asked to solve multi-step problems. They're asked to look at certain ways of doing things that might be more efficient, or looking at it in a bunch of different ways. So that's, I think, isn't that, that's pretty much it on the math, and then we'll be happy...
Do you want to address any other questions?
Curriculum.
I'll take that. I was thinking of the question asked earlier about the, how, what are the exciting things we're doing with curriculum? And if there's any overlap across contents? And we do have, I think, several collaborations going on in the district that are exciting. We implemented some model curriculum units in the third grade and second grade the last few years. Those have integrated several ELA standards at the same time, and they go through a larger quantity of texts in a short amount of time. It used to be something like if we're teaching a biography unit, then we all read a biography, and we talk about the elements of biography, whereas in these units, they're reading several biographies about one person, several about another person, and then they're writing their own biography at the end, updating it based on other biographies they've read. They're having exciting conversations at those grade levels about that. Currently, there's an interdisciplinary unit at the middle school, A Long Walk to Water, which maybe some of your students are involved in, which is a content that crosses math, science, social studies, and English at the same time, and includes some social action work in it. So making learning real for students and authentic for students as much as possible.
If I can just add, Liz had mentioned the vertical workshop that took place this summer in the area of math, and I think that this is a really exciting professional development that took place in the district. This was a week-long workshop, they had teachers from pre-K through 12 involved working together. It was facilitated by teachers in the district, and it was really teachers talking and thinking about mathematics together. And not only gaining an understanding for what one another teaches, but an appreciation. And I think it is the beginning of instilling a responsibility to one another about what we're doing each year through our instructional practice, so that we can offer the very best to our students from the time they start their mathematical journey till the time that they end it. And so it's a very exciting structure to use in trying to build curriculum and to collaborate on instructional practice. So I think that's, I think that's very exciting, too. It's a little bit different approach than we've taken in the past.
So now I'm going to open up the discussion to what's on the board, Newburyport's implementation of the Common Core. And if anyone has any questions about either ELA or math, please share those with us now. Yes?
I have a question about, you've mentioned that math is a good entry point for developing literacy skills. Is that your view of Newburyport's implementing the Common Core standard, or is that something that's specified in the Common Core standard, that math is now not necessarily logic-based, but literacy-based?
Well, I think it's, I think it's logic-based still, yeah. I think it's just that there's so much literacy that goes along with it, because there's so much of, kids now, even at the very early ages, they're asked to demonstrate their knowledge in words, pictures, and in using equations. So even, even young kids are asked to, you know, draw what they know, or, and then write it in words, and then write it as an equation. So it's kind of a, it's just a, it's a mixture of all sorts of really knowledge for kids. So yeah, that's a, that's a really, really good question. I think it's a combination, so, yeah.
This is the district's interpretation of the standard. It's not necessarily that the Common Core requires such heavy use of language in the math system.
No, but the Common Core does say that kids need to be able to reason and to be able to defend their knowledge. So it's, it's using multiple modalities to be able to defend their knowledge. So that's part of the Common Core, yes.
Now, in terms of, I guess a follow-up question. I know you've been discussing sort of the choice that the teachers have in implementing the curriculum that has been put forward.
Right.
And I guess I'd like to understand a little bit better how that's working in practice, because everything that I've seen coming home is an Engage New York worksheet. I haven't seen a single thing coming home from, you know, third, fourth, or seventh grade that is not an Engage New York worksheet or packet. So I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about some of the choice that the teachers are having in terms of their ability to reach outside Engage New York and find some other methods. And also, just a side note, I actually heard from somebody who was substitute teaching that they had taken manipulatives out of the classroom. So I found it interesting that you'd mentioned that they are using manipulatives in some of the grades, and so if you could ask, if you could answer that as well.
Sure, sure. Well, I'll answer that one first. There are manipulatives being used in every grade, and the research actually says that kids should be able to use the manipulatives all the way into high school if it's something that they, they need to have, or if it's something that helps them to understand. So the manipulatives have always been part of the instruction, so it's, that's not really anything new. Some of the models are a little bit different, or they're called something a little bit different, and I think that's something that both the special educators and the regular ed teachers have spent a lot of time really trying to understand the models, and trying to understand which, how the manipulatives are used within their classrooms. So everybody's using them, you know, K to, well, at least K to eight. And then in terms of the work that teachers are doing within their classrooms and what they choose, on any given day, you can walk into really any classroom, and they use a variety of different things. So they use some online, you know, tools, they use Mad Minutes, which are things that they've used for years, they use, you know, games that they've developed within their classrooms. So a lot of times you won't see those things come home, because those will be part of their morning meeting, or those will be part of their, depending on their grade level, their calendar work that they do in class, or it'll be something that will be an enrichment after they're done with something. So you're, you, a lot of times you won't see a lot of that stuff coming home, because it's not, it's things that are being really done in class. And I think if you went into any math class at any day, I don't think that you would see exclusively any, anything, you know, being done. I think they'd be adding it to certain times, and it depends on what the kids need, too. So there are going to be some things that they're going to need extra practice with. And so then the teachers have got some, you know, some bag of tricks that they're using to help the kids to understand, whatever the concept was.
If I could interject, too, about your question about Engage New York. This year is our first year of implementation with the Engage New York learning modules. And we decided this year that we would try our very best to implement it with as much fidelity as we possibly can. Because it's a first year of implementation, it's the only way we're going to learn about what aspects of the resource are really good and really necessary, and what aspects we may be able to adjust. So what we decided this year is that we were going to adopt these modules as they were. We're going to take copious notes, we're going to work through them, and we're going to see what we learn about the implementation of this resource. At the end of this year, we may be adapting the resource. And that's the beauty of this open source resource that we decided to use for teaching math. So the reason you're seeing a lot of Engage New York things coming home this year is because all of our teachers, K through eight, are working very hard to try to implement this program with as much fidelity as we possibly can. We need to find out, is the timeline going to work for us here in Newburyport? Are we really meaning, are our kids at the place that we need them to be, at the entry points that we need them to be? And so in some cases, we've had to supplement already because we've learned. You know, this is starting higher than once the students are entering this grade level with a particular skill. And that's because it's a first year of implementation, and so it will take a little while to be completely, to be able to work that all out. But you should be seeing Engage New York materials coming home, because that is what's being taught in the classrooms this year.
How is it being supplemented with special education children who do not have the literacy?
I mean, that's really, I look at this stuff, and I get, my third grader comes home with a worksheet, and I'll read it to you if you'd like to see it, which says, "Explain using your knowledge of communicative property. How you can write an equation different from Part V to describe the array that you drew in Part A." This is a great question. I said, "Honey, I'm sorry, I know what communicative property is." You know, and this is, I mean, it's ridiculous, I just don't think that, some of the, what I've looked at online, it discusses the Engage New York process, says that the concern from some of the social workers and the developmental specialists are that kids at that age don't even have the capacity, like their brains are not developed enough to actually be able to understand that kind of language. And you're going to be causing frustration for a large segment of the population, that, you know, math may be a skill, when you're combining these other types of, you know, people are strong at math, some people are not strong at literacy. My concern is you're going to be losing a bunch of kids. And has anybody studied, you know, how the curriculum needs to be perhaps modified to deal with this segment of the population, and at what cost? You know, are these kids going to be able to access this curriculum? And I just haven't heard an answer to that question as to whether or not it's even been studied.
Well, it's certainly part of the implementation. Our special education population, or any student who's struggling to learn, to learn, our special educators or interventionists are always using modifications to help them access the curriculum at the point that they're entering and move from there. So we are not at this time offering an alternative curriculum for our special education students who are integrated into the classroom, but we are working to modify the curriculum in a way that they can access it. So that's all part of the work that we're doing this year, and certainly it is in the forefront of everybody's mind. It was something that I hear the teachers discussing frequently, is something that they reach out to Liz about around the modifications that are being made, and they're sharing strategies around the things that are working and are not working. There are some components in the structure of the program, in the way you deliver the instruction, that allows for repeated instruction around a particular concept. It allows some students to move to the next level within that concept, or it would allow students who are struggling to learn the concept to spiral back and have some repeated instruction around it. So there are some components that are, you know, built right in that allow for some differentiation to. But I think that, you know, this is all part of a new implementation of any resource, there are going to be some things that you have to work out as you move through the implementation, and you're going to learn as you go along.
Yes?
One of the things that, in talking about the math that you had mentioned was, one, that you were teaching the kids more efficient ways to come up with these math problems. I don't know if you've done it already, but it's probably the most inefficient way of calculating math. I've worked in the financial industry for over 25 years, and I know for a fact my son will never encounter situations where he needs to get to the end of a math occasion by using pictures, numbers, and words. where he needs to get to the end of a math equation by using pictures, numbers, and words. The other thing that you mentioned, though, was that they have the ability to utilize different methods for coming up with equations. And I fully understand that maybe for children who have trouble understanding math, that maybe drawing out the math equation may be helpful. But for kids that excel at math and can do math in a simple form, I don't understand why they're not being given the opportunity to do it the way they know how to do it and get to, I should rephrase that, use the most efficient way that they know how. For the children that are sort of midway through, like, my son is in fourth grade. So, for the kids in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade that have learned now for several years how to do math one way, and now they're being brought backwards to relearn it, to stay on this level plane field, that I don't understand. For me, my son is in fourth grade, and we're now going into November, and we're working on addition and subtraction that he can do in his head, but will take an hour to an hour and a half to draw out using pictures, numbers, and words. Some of the math came home as an assignment for parents. I did it myself. It took me well over an hour to do his math sheets, to draw it out in pictures, numbers, and words. That should have taken me more than five minutes to do. So, why aren't kids being given the opportunity to use the most efficient methods to getting the answers to their equations if they know how to do it? I know that my son is getting very frustrated, because he can do the math, and when I, when he's doing it, he's getting frustrated, because he's being told, "I have to do it this way, Mom. I can't do it the way I know how to do it. I can do the sheet in a couple of minutes, but I have to sit there for an hour, because I will be considered wrong, and it won't be acceptable if I turn it off." And I have a problem with that.
Well, I mean, no one should be working for an hour on their homework, so.
Yeah, to draw a picture, it takes math, or to draw a.
I understand, I understand.
A problem to draw it out.
I understand, I understand.
At the end, do the actual number equation that you could have done at the beginning and had it done. It just, it doesn't make sense.
Okay. I think that, you know, we're getting into some very specific questions around the math, and I know that we've got really limited amount of time. I mean, maybe, maybe there's another way we could do some, you know, parent information evening or something around specifically around the Engage New York, because I'm just afraid we won't be able to dive in deep enough. But I think that that might be a really helpful thing.
Sure. And I, I mean, I would, I'd send a note in with, to the teacher and say, "This took me an hour, and I, I don't, it's not the best." So, I think no one should be working for an hour on their homework. Not in fourth grade.
This is not, I don't think she's asking a specific question.
No, I understand.
I think this goes to the general sort of dissatisfaction with this, with the Engage New York curriculum. And I guess my question is accountability. How did we end up with this curriculum? Who chose it? What data was there to support it, other than, I understand, it's free for the district? And how are we going to move away from it, when it just, it's, like you said, I'm a tax lawyer. You know, nobody is going to sit around and have a conversation about three different ways to find fifteen plus three. It's just, it's not real world, the way that this math curriculum is working. And that's, those are the questions I have. Who chose it? How did we get here? What is the data to support as to whether or not it works? Because my understanding is, in New York, they're trying to get away from it. And how can we make a change if this is, given where we are at this point?
Angela, why don't you just take a minute and talk about the pilots that we did?
Okay.
And just, because I.
Let me, I'll talk about how we came to the decision to implement Engage New York this year. And I don't have the research in front of me, but we can provide you with some of the research behind this. But what we did last year is we had teachers in most of our grade levels pilot at least one or two modules, some piloted many more than that, of the Engage New York. And we talked with the teachers that were going through the pilot, so that we could get feedback. We did classroom observations in the classrooms where the pilot, where the pilots were going on. We looked at student work in the classrooms where the pilots were going on. We looked at the Common Core state standards, and we looked at the alignment of the Engage New York materials. We conferred with a science, with a math consultant that we've used in the district, and we have great respect for Dr. Chen. He has worked with our teachers in the past around professional development. Dr. Chen is very familiar with the team that put the Engage New York materials together. We talked with Dr. Chen about the quality of the materials and the research behind these resources. And it was his recommendation, along with the feedback, that we received from all the teachers in the pilot and us looking at the resources and aligning them to the Common Core, which led us to the decision that we were going to implement this year with this resource.
And has we, is that the school board, or who?
This is, this was myself and Liz and the principals and the superintendent. Based on the information, all of our principals had conversations with the teachers in their buildings that were implementing through the pilot. And they taught, they discussed moving forward with them, and then we made a district decision around that. And like I said, we're in first year of implementation. We're gathering a lot of data around it. Nothing is set in stone for life, but we, you know, we need to give it a fair shot. And when you look at the other resources that are out there right now, there are not math-teaching resources that are well-aligned to the Common Core. The textbook companies have not caught up with this yet, because, you know, they've been in several iterations of the Common Core and continuing to make revisions. And so, this is a much better resource, as far as alignment goes, than what we were using in the district. This was not a huge investment to move in this direction, even if it is for us to learn from until we decide what the next step is going to be.
I, one, one thing I'd like to say is, I think it's, I think that there are some valid points that are being raised, and I think that what comes to mind for me is that I would like to, I would like to now go back and get some feedback from the teachers who are implementing this. Because I think one of the questions that's raised for me that you bring up is, in our quest to really have fidelity in what we're doing, is it overkill? And it sounds to me like perhaps that may be what you're raising. And in fact, that some of the, that perhaps we're holding so to the letter of the law that we may be missing the boat here. So, I think that, that for me, that for me is, is, I think what we need to do is to have that conversation with the teachers, and that's something I think we can do pretty quickly. But I, I think those are valid points, and I think we need to explore them.
Yeah, I would just like to have my child be given the option. It sounds like what you're saying is that the basis of the Common Core, as it relates to math, is that the child can demonstrate and explain how he got the answer. He should be given the opportunity to do that in the most efficient way possible, not in every single way possible as outlined by these worksheets that you could possibly do. Because that's not a life skill, and it's not college-ready. And he would not get that job if he went in with that attitude.
So, not, well, we'll go back and have those conversations.
And for, like I said, the kids that are midway through the process, they're the ones that are suffering right now. My fourth grader should not be doing addition and subtraction and drawing pictures to explain it.
One last question, Mary?
Yeah, I mean, I think my overall question we are concerned with so much of this is that this is not field-tested proven. There's been no proven results that it's better, that it's worse, that more tests for kids are better or worse. And I feel that, you know, if the teachers are flushing it out this year, and then perhaps doing something else next year, and then, you know, might go for a different curriculum in the third year, you've lost a whole slew of kids. I mean, you're, you're, you're playing with, with, you know, these, these children's education. If you're starting this at kindergarten, and, you know, you need to learn these certain skills in K one, two, and three, and we didn't get our curriculum right, we didn't get our standards right, you lost them. And, and back to Lynn's point, there's got to be accountability. And I feel like I, myself, have asked so many questions and have got no answers, no specifics. And, and I don't think it's fair to say, "We don't know it yet. We're going to see. We're going to tally the results." These are my children, and I want the best for them, and I want answers.
There is no, I mean, there is no one perfect curriculum that I think exists for Common Core. I mean, it's, it's not there. Every district gets to interpret the standards the way that they want to do it. This does not, this doesn't lessen a teacher's obligation to continue to differentiate instruction for students. And if a teacher is noticing that a student is either struggling or is really moving through pretty quickly, still incumbent upon the teacher to address those with a variety of other things. You know, teachers, at least in the classrooms that I've been in, and I have done some walkthroughs already this year, the classrooms that I've been in, I've seen examples where teachers are either providing additional resources for kids, and I'm not just talking about math, I'm talking about in other subject areas, too, or, in fact, they're challenging kids. I mean, I have seen examples of that so far this year. So, I don't want anybody to think that we are so tied to the curriculum that we're not, that teachers aren't making adjustments day in and day out. As, you know, as an educator, and I consider myself a teacher at heart, that's part and parcel of what you do every single day. So, I don't want you to think that we are so, that it's so black and white, that we're not doing anything beyond, you know, what happens. Teachers make those decisions every single day. So, that, that has not changed. So, I would like people to at least feel comfortable knowing that.
I'd just like to add that we were talking tonight about the standards, because that was the topic at hand. When we are choosing curriculum and, and professional development for instruction, our, we go to the standards, we go to the needs of our students based on the assessment data that we have, but we also go to the research. And we've talked about, you know, what would have been our next steps with our district if the new standards hadn't come along. And, and we've agreed, these would likely have been our next steps regardless, because they echo what research is guiding us to do in, with students. So, in that way, there is some accountability in terms of, you know, peer-reviewed research articles that we study.
Can I say that I'm really happy to hear, Susan, that you're going to look into the notion of differentiation? Because while I've been happy with the teachers my children have had, I've also found, I would say, a lot of misses, I think, in the name of consistency and things that, as an educator, like, I look at the sheet they give me, and I know where it's coming from, the Common Core. I can just read the translation from sidebar to sidebar without any thought of how to make this exciting or enriching or engaging. My kids have walked into the libraries in the buildings and been told that this month they can only take out nonfiction biographies, instead of, "What are you really jazzed to read about right now?" So, there, there are things going on, and I don't know if it's building-level or grade-level paranoia, because the teachers' careers are hinged on success. And I, and I know, coming from New York, there's paranoia, and people are using Engage New York or avoiding Engage New York for different reasons. But whatever it is, I'm glad to hear that something we're going to be, you're going to be looking into is, is the actual classroom-level work. And how do we support teachers to still be excited professionals and to bring that enthusiasm for each kid forward? So, it's not, consistency shouldn't be the goal. I understand it's a tool.
Right.
It's a nice thing to have as a benchmark, but as soon as consistency or adoption of a, you know, programs start to finish is a goal, then you know who's in either direction, whether it's someone who's having trouble accessing the curriculum or someone who's done the curriculum, you know, two years ago and ready for something else. Oh, yeah, right. So, and all those kids are there, so it's nice. So, thank you for making that, judging by the clock, because you're closing focus.
I want to thank you all for coming this evening. This brings us to the end of our first topic forum. I would like to invite you to email either the school committee or the members here that have, or the superintendent or the members here that have presented to you if you have some further questions. I hope this was helpful. It was meant to be informative. It was meant to help you to understand what the Common Core means to the curriculum in Newburyport, the efforts that everyone is making to align our curriculum with the standards. So, I want to thank you for coming this evening. And please contact any one of us if you have some further questions. Thank you. I'm going to take a minute break here before we start our school committee meeting.
I would just like to add that I think that this has been a wonderful turnout. It's been really terrific engagement and interaction. And if you have other topics that you would like us to set up to do another forum like this, to engage, have this kind of dialogue, please send it forward to us also. We're very, very. Thank you very much for coming.
Move to approve minutes of, as read.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Next is our high school representative, Julia Bradley, to fill us in on what's happening at the high school.
So, not a lot going on right now. It's kind of quiet. On October 25th, it's a sophomore semi-formal. And on the 31st, there's a Halloween dance at this school, put on by NHS Theater. The first college applications are being sent out this week. So, there's, stress level is pretty high right now. We're still working on a date for the club fair, which we're trying to have every year at the beginning of the year. And we are also working on a date for a women's self-defense class, hopefully in the second or third week of November. And that's it right now. It's pretty quiet.
Anybody have a question or comment for Julia? Thank you, Julia. Next, I'm going to turn this next section over to the superintendent for discussion of the district goals for 2014, 2015.
At the last school committee meeting, I presented district goals to you. You have a copy of them in your packet. I suggested that I give you until this meeting to give me, provide me with any feedback or any suggestions. I have received none. So, I am.
That's disabled perfect.
I am asking for a vote.
I did give feedback at the last meeting.
Yes, but I'm saying specifically from, from that time to me. So, I'm asking for a vote on this.
Putting your motion to vote on the goals. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I ask a second and then?
Audrey did.
Okay.
Opposed? Thank you. These are the goals for the Newburyport School Committee, the Newburyport Public Schools for the 2014, 2015 school year. Thank you.
And I just would make a comment to Mr. Menon that the specifics that you requested are duly noted in terms of the breadth and depth of some of the goals.
Thank you. Next item up on our agenda is the contract negotiations for the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. The school committee has had two executive session meetings on the contract negotiations between the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. between the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. We have successfully reached contract with both of them, so, um, you have a signed contract of your contract. Did the mayor sign it yet?
He's not, he's not given it yet.
So all we need to do is to sign those contracts and, um, thank you ladies for continuing to join us. The votes for the contracts were unanimous. We will be going into executive session this evening to briefly vote for the last two executive session minute, minutes, and then we will, we will be releasing those minutes, um, to the public. Any question, thought?
I, I thought that maybe my, my, I'm getting old and maybe my memory is failing, but I thought that we vote, um, on the contract for the superintendent in executive session and then come back out and vote.
Vote for it in public.
Vote for it in public session, so.
All right.
No, I don't.
At our last meeting.
We voted in the last...
Is it in the minutes?
No, in executive session, we voted.
No, and then we come back out in public session to vote. We're supposed to come back out.
Which is now.
Right, right, so that's, I didn't hear that.
No, we don't have to go back into executive session.
No, shoot, that was for something else, that was for the minutes, for releasing minutes.
Correct.
Yeah.
But for, but we do need to confirm and ratify the superintendent's contract. We can vote publicly. That would have resulted.
Yeah, I thought I was having one of those moments.
Let's have a motion, Mr. Menon.
I would like to move that we approve the, um, contract that we've offered to the superintendent of schools as, as it was offered.
Second?
I would ask the vice chair just to, um, for, say to the public, just talk about some of the additions or changes that have been added to superintendent's contract. It would be so kind.
We have extended the superintendent's contract for a year. Um, she had an addition, she had a three-year contract. We have extended her contract for a year. We have given her, uh, three more sick days. We have given her a two percent raise and, uh, are paying for her rotary dues, and those are the changes from the contract from last time to this time. Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Menon?
Um, I, I'm really glad that we were able to reach an extension of the contract and I look forward to continuing to work with you. And, um, I've been very impressed with your first year here and I'm glad that you're continuing with us.
Last minute standing. And then, um, second, we have voted unanimously, we need to roll call, please.
Roll call, thank you.
Mr. Decanter?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Lukens?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Bruce Menon?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Unanimously. Um, secondly, we took up the, uh, contract for the, um, assistant superintendent and the change in her contract is that we have given her a two percent raise as well. Motion to approve? Second? All those in favor, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call, voting.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Lukens?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
Yes.
Ms. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Decanter?
Yes.
Congratulations. I'm gonna move now to the superintendent's report.
Okay. I'd like to update the, uh, school committee on the website. Um, it is going a little bit slower than I would prefer, but that is due to some of the, uh, technology issues that we have had at Knock-Mullen, and that has prohibited the folks there from being able to access the old website as well as the new website on a regular basis. So I'm hoping that we will be able to ramp that up over the next couple of weeks, and while it may not be exactly the last week in October when we launch the new website, it should be shortly thereafter. Um, we, we have another meeting, uh, via, uh, online with the website folks this week. So things are progressing, they are moving along, um, but I, I did wanna report that that's really one of the things that's holding us up right now is that we have not had the consistent access to technology that we need to continue to make the enhancements. Um, I will be holding, um, the first, uh, internal, what I'm gonna term, for, for lack of a better term, a crisis meeting this week with the leadership team. And we are looking at our current policies and procedures, we will be expanding that, uh, to include folks from the city, uh, at, at our next meeting, but we will be doing that, uh, this, this coming week. We also are, have a meeting this week on the, uh, playground at Mullen, and Mr. Bergholm and I will be meeting with folks from the community on that, and, uh, that also ties into the potential expansion of the skate park. So that's, that's also going on. Um, I wanted to inform you that Chartwells has hired a new district manager, Scott Valentino, and I will be meeting with Scott and Sharon, um, later on this week, and we'll be inviting Scott and Sharon to probably a finance committee in the very near future. Uh, we also, it, this is a busy week, we also will be having our second se, third session for negotiations with the teachers regarding district determined measures. And I, I, lastly, I wanna end, uh, with the conference that I attended, the District Administration Leadership Institute, um, which was probably one of the best conferences I have ever been to. Had a very different format than I was used to. There were thirty-minute, that, presentations were thirty minutes in length and that was it. And it, it made me laugh a little bit because that's about the attention span of superintendents, apparently. But it, it provided, the, the whole focus of the conference was to put into superintendent's hands tools that they could walk away with. And I came away with some very good ideas. The other thing that they did that I was most impressed by is the entire conference was recorded. They make it available to you the day after the conference is over and they want you to go back and share it with your leadership team. And they want you to, to interact with, with your leadership team. So that was a, a very positive approach. I have already shared it with the entire leadership team. We're gonna be having some future meetings coming up, we'll, we'll be discussing some of the suggestions and resources. But it was everything from, you know, new math tools that you could use to how can you communicate better within your school district. So very practical types of things. Um, but it was, it was definitely a, a very positive experience for me and I feel like I, I really will be able to bring back a lot of information to the school district. So you'll be hearing more about some specifics in the future. And that was it.
Bless you, thank you. Uh, yes, Mr.?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is, I don't see it under subcommittee reports. I wonder if, if either Michael or Susan or both would, uh, talk about the building, school building projects, give us just a, a quick update on where we are with this stuff.
Um, I think that we are, we're certainly in the closeout phase, uh, at Breznerhand. There are still some things that we are tweaking in terms of the punch list and that'll be, that will be ongoing. Uh, we have a meeting, uh, with, in the neighborhood tomorrow night, we'll be meeting with the abutters, uh, as a follow-up and, uh, we did that regularly throughout the project. I think that we are, um, looking at some specific things in terms of technology that we're still rolling out and, um, but that has, we've made significant progress there, so I think we're in, we're in pretty good shape at Breznerhand. Uh, Knock-Mullen, we're also moving along, there are still some, uh, some significant things that need to be done. We have some computers that are in the library media center that the, the wiring for those still needs to go in, but we do have our, uh, computer labs are up and running. Um, it always pleases, it pleases me to be able to walk by those labs every day and to see kids in there and actively engaged. Um, a lot of punch list items at Knock-Mullen, uh, still, and I, they're gonna be there for a while.
But we hit substantial completion, which is, so the school, the building was turned over to the school a week ago Friday. And so that, that was the, the benchmark that was important for us to achieve.
Good, yeah, I, I had the opportunity to go through the building, um, at the end of last week and, and, um, and I know that one of the punch list items or maybe even an item that would hopefully get adjusted before it hits the punch list is the, um, uh, and, and the reason I'm sharing this is, is because it does, we've been having conversation for years about moving over to the library over there to, to the school committee meetings. And, um, there is a significant noise problem with the, with the ventilators, which...
They haven't got to balancing, yeah, and, and that's one of them in particular as well, as a couple of the science labs still.
Yeah, yeah, so that's...
So obviously that has to happen first before we even consider it.
That, that, I, I do, to your point, I think that that is a much more versatile space so that hopefully in the future we will be able to use that for a variety of different functions, including school committee meetings, because I think it lends itself.
State they were involved in. Um, and the, there were, as the superintendent explained in the fingerprinting policy of the state, there were certain areas in which school districts were given some flexibility. And, um, for us, one of the areas that we exercised, uh, flexibility, or the administration is suggesting, we exercised our flexibility on the side of caution, had to do with, um, parents and volunteers who were involved in day trips. In the feedback that we got from the community, that seemed to be the, the point that was the most difficult, knowing that again, because it's an unfunded mandate, we pass that cost on to parents, we pass that cost on to teachers. Um, and the rationale for suggesting that, uh, chaperones be fingerprinted if they're involved in day trips, uh, is that very often their, uh, the involvement of those volunteers and parents are critical, given the number of kids and the number of staff we have, and it's not at all unlikely that some small groups of students will be alone with a single individual adult. And on the basis of trying to be careful, that's the recommendation that was made. So our conversation had to do with, um, the, the reality that, that A, there may be some parents out there who are not able to participate simply because they can't, they can't afford the thirty-five dollars. Um, and the second, uh, the second issue that we raised are that there are a number of folks out there who already have been fingerprinted, uh, for, for some, uh, reason. Um, and whether or not that would be transferable, and I use myself as an example, as a Civil War reenactor, um, because I handle black powder, I'm required to get a license to carry. In order to get a license to carry, I have to get fingerprinted. If I can't, uh, if I, if I've committed a felony, I don't get my license to carry. So by virtue of the fact that I've got the card, um, I've already been fingerprinted and the card itself says my fingerprints were on file at the police department. So whether or not there would be some flexibility to be able to, um, use that existing set of fingerprints that have been taken for some parents, um, are, are two questions that the, uh, superintendent is gonna explore. The recommendation coming out of, of the, uh, policy committee is that we approve the recommendations for policy made by the administration with the stipulation that the superintendent is gonna be, be reporting back to us on the, uh, the funding piece for those parents for whom it may be a hardship, and also with information, uh, hopefully constructive information, allowing us to make use of, of those fingerprints that are already done. So that is our recommendation and I, I will, I'm happy to put that in the form of a motion. I move that we, I move we accept the, uh, policy as, uh, promulgated by the administration with the understanding that there are two pieces of information the superintendent is gonna, uh, research and report back on that may, uh, have us make an amendment to the policy.
Discussion?
Mr. Lukens?
Can you write that out, Tom?
Yeah, I will. Yep.
I, I have some concerns over the use of fingerprinting, um, volunteer chaperones. I, I mean, I think that one of the most important things a school system can do is to encourage parent and community member volunteerism and involvement. And certainly mandating fingerprinting and a national criminal background check would discourage involvement and I understand that it's often difficult to find chaperones for some of those field trips. Um, and, you know, the, the second concern is, is around cost. Um, you know, we impose many fees on, um, our parents and families. In most cases, we're able to offer them on a sliding scale or, or offer some sort of district reimbursement in cases. Um, you know, things like free and reused lunch or transportation costs or other, or other costs, um, and, and that's one of the things that you'll like into, but right now, you know, thirty-five dollar per person cost would apply to all things regardless of, of, uh, income. Um, you know, I, I guess the question for me boils down to whether, I, I think discouraging parent and community member involvement, uh, specifically in chaperoning field trips along with the cost issue, um, is, is more than offset by a potential increase in student safety and obviously student safety is of utmost importance and I have doubts on whether that potential increase in, in safety would offset those two things. I, I, I really believe that, um, you know, I, already I had some issues with, I, I think it's appropriate that Massachusetts adopted, uh, regulation for school personnel. I think that the state was late in the game in terms of, um, mandating national criminal background checks and fingerprinting for school personnel. Um, but to extend that to, um, volunteers that are not covered by that regulation seems to me to be a little bit, um, e- excessive, at least right now. I would, I would propose that we, uh, not extend it to school chaperones and reconsider the issue, um, at a later date, um, if we think that student safety would be compromised in the, in the future.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Just, just a couple of things. Um, I, I think that, and I, I guess I wanna share my thinking, um, because I, I can, you know, I certainly wear a number of hats when I think about, um, situations like this. And I, I think my thinking was along the lines of many of our field trips are situations in which we have a parent with small groups of kids and they're shepherding them sometimes for the good portion of the day, taking them to the bathroom, having them get lunch. Not everybody, um, not every parent knows every other parent. This was one more safeguard for me in this particular, um, in this particular case. We have already had a number of parents who have gotten fingerprinted because they wanted to volunteer. Now, right now, there is a backlog of being able to even be fingerprinted because the state doesn't have enough venues right now to be able to do it on a timely basis. So even if parents, you know, we've relaxed it a little bit right now 'cause we've had to. Um, I just feel that in any situation where a parent has jurisdiction over kids for a lengthy period of time with the potential of not having another adult around, that, that it just, it was one more safeguard. So that was my thinking in it. The, the other thing that we talked about in the policy committee meeting tonight that I think is important is that I am going to speak to the, uh, PTO board because I would like to see whether or not there's any venue there where we could create something so that for parents where it is particularly a hardship, we, the PTOs would be able to support them. So that is one, that's another conversation I'll have. But I think it's important that the, um, the school committee understand, first of all, that some parents have already been fingerprinted, so they've already paid the fee, and, um, that, that I want you to understand what my thinking was behind making that recommendation.
Any further comments?
Um, I, yeah, um, my comment would be that there is, there's an issue of, of venues that's creating the backlog, but my understanding also is that the state uses one vendor to do this. Um, it's, it's not a competitive situation, you can't walk over to the police department and get it done, um, for this, although that is where I got fingerprinted when I was doing my license to carry. So, um, I, I, I appreciate the state's interest, I also appreciate the need to try to act in, uh, with this, the greatest degree of safety. I, I personally, um, feel that, that the policy, um, was not very well, the regulation- I, I personally, um, feel that, that the policy, um, was not very well, the regulation as promulgated was not very well thought through. It was simply thought through, passed on, and, um, implementing it, the resources are simply not there. You know, not only is it an unfunded mandate, but it's an unfunded mandate that you have to squeeze through a single vendor in order to, in order to, to meet the obligation. And that, that was why we asked the superintendent to explore whether those, uh, those folks out there who for a variety of reasons have already had to get fingerprinted, um, and have established that they, you know, can use that as, as an alternative. So, um, and I, and I, I also, um, I agree that we want to do everything we can to encourage people to, to participate in the schools, and it, and it, it's a disincentive. It's, I, I get that. Um, I, I think we need to err on the side of safety, and that's, so I appreciate your feedback on that.
Any other comments?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Colton?
Based on, uh, what we find out fiscally, uh, what type of cost various volunteers are going to essentially ante up, can we maybe think about budgeting that for next year so they don't have to absorb the cost? Because I think that, um, you know, volunteering one's time is, uh, you know, that adds value in a number of different ways to the situation, and I, I, you know, I, I think I'd feel better if the school district, if you will, picked up the cost of this, uh, maybe in the next fiscal year.
Any other comments?
The, the only thing that I would add to this is that the fingerprinting process is a one-time deal, or its quarry needs to be renewed, so that's the thirty-five dollars you pay.
Um, I, I don't know if we have an answer to the question, but do we, do, do we pay for the quarries that we do, or are we under the, the state program that you don't have to pay for them?
I'm not aware that we pay for them.
Okay.
So, and I will double check that, but I don't think we.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we do. I, I know some nonprofits don't, and I was unsure where the schools needed to.
We have a motion on the table.
Um, I, I should probably state the motion since it was kind of rambled. Um, uh, what I've narrowed it down to, to be is approve the fingerprinting policy proposed by the administration, contingent on the superintendent researching whether we can find a strategy to address cost and hardship situations, and whether prior fingerprinting can be used to meet the policy. Is that?
Second again.
Can I just add that with that mandated by the state as opposed to proposed by the superintendent?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yes, thank you, yeah.
Um, I can say mandated by the state.
And unfunded.
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to say that, but, but what we're voting on is a policy that the administration has proposed.
I know, but if that's going to be our vote on this policy, I believe it needs to indicate that this wasn't a policy that was generated.
Right, but what you had, I thought you had asked me to substitute mandated by the state for proposed by the administration. So I, I don't think we can.
You vote.
We can't, we can't, I can put in mandated by the state, but our policy, the one we're voting on now is not the state policy, it's the superintendent's recommendation to us based on the state.
But we haven't voted on the state policy, though.
What? We don't vote on the state policy, it's policy.
It's a mandate.
Yeah, it's a mandate. So, and I, I don't mind saying mandated by the state.
Ms. McCarthy?
Can you just read that line again about, uh, hardship?
Yeah, I wrote contingent on the superintendent researching, uh, whether, whether we can find or identify a strategy to address hardship situations. I mean, it's, she, you know, I don't know that there will be, but we're asking her to, to look and see.
Yeah, I just hope it's not understood that there would be some sort of policy for hardship, because I think going back to what the superintendent said about people that have already paid.
Right.
Um, I mean, I think hardship, when you're talking about something that costs hundreds of dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Policy for hardship, and not the thirty-five dollars is all I want to, I'm just, but I just, I don't want it understood that we will be developing a policy for hardship when it comes to fingerprinting, because, and, and what Steve said is, you know, who knows what the future holds, maybe we can, but you know what, if we have any extra money, we should love to put it towards something else besides fingerprinting. So I just don't want to be committed, and as long as it's understood that we're just like Reese looking at it, but I don't want any understanding that we are definitely going to have a policy in the future.
I think the, the hardship piece of it, Bruce, is actually very specific in the, the superintendent will talk to PTOs to see if they can assist parents who are having to, who are making the thirty-five dollar payments.
Better than the tax.
That it's being indicated that it's a, school committee might come up with a policy on, you know, you know, I just don't want to be committed to that.
Can I ask one more question? Ms. O'Leary. What is the rationale behind having school committee members fingerprinted as well if they're not volunteering? It's part of the policy?
School personnel. You get a statement, our school personnel.
All right, so, uh, so we, so we've got some changes here, let me, just.
I'll withdraw my second. Try again.
Yep. Approve the fingerprinting policy mandated without funding by the state as proposed by the administration, um, contingent on the superintendent discussing with PTOs possible ways to address cost in hardship situations, and whether prior fingerprinting can be used to meet the requirements of the policy.
Patrick.
I feel better, I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Do we need a roll call?
No, no, roll call.
All those in favor of the policy as stated the last time?
And restated and.
Well, no, the last time.
As modified.
As modified, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you.
I'll give this to you, Mrs. Kennedy.
Yes.
And, uh, we will reschedule, uh, for somewhere over the next two weeks.
Policy. And you'll be revisiting and returning with the use of the Bresnahan school facility?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, curriculum instruction and accountability committee?
Um, this committee will meet, um, tomorrow, the superintendent's meeting tomorrow at five thirty in the superintendent's conference room.
Thank you. Superintendent's evaluation subcommittee, uh, we would like to set a date for that meeting so that we can move on with that cycle. So, uh, right now, it's the mayor and myself who are on that subcommittee. Um, if there is someone else who would like to join us, that's fine. Um, other than that, we will set up our first meeting and report back, um, at our next school committee meeting. Hopefully it'll only happen in the next two weeks, or is that okay? Yeah.
Cheryl, if you want my assistance, I'll be happy to participate.
Thank you. Um, now I'm confused, do we need an executive session?
So, not if we're just talking about the, the, uh, contracts.
Was that the word from our attorney, though?
No, it, I, what I spoke with her about is that the school committee, in terms of releasing executive session minutes, needs to meet on what they define as a regular basis. So my suggestion is that when you have three or four or five executive sessions that you've had, then the school committee needs to meet in executive session to determine if any can be released, and you need to do that on a regular basis, so.
And we just released our last executive session.
So, right.
So we're fine. Um, just one other point, I just wanted to be sure everyone got the date of the joint school committee and, um, city council meeting that was set up by Joint Ed. I was on, uh, uh, on Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, November twelfth at seven o'clock at the library. And, uh, we'll work on, uh, the, our finance team, because it really is a financial piece. Oh, that's right, six fifteen late dinner provided by the mayor, um, followed by our business meeting after that.
I just reminded him that he was feeding us.
Yes, I, thank you. I'm feeding.
That's a great idea.
Um, and that our finance team met last weekend, are, are putting together some, um, you know, just sort of strategy about how the budget process is developed, because I think that was, um, you know, part of, a couple slides about that. And then we need to prepare what, uh, we anticipate as needs for the school, uh, which is really the, the intent behind, uh, this meeting.
Thank you. And there is, um, an NEF dedication night at the Bresnahan school on Wednesday, November nineteenth at six P.M. Anyone like to attend that? Um, it's my understanding that we don't need to go into executive session to release our minutes. We have three sets of minutes that, um, will be released and posted. That's all. Did I hear? Oh, no, don't, Mrs. Mc- Mrs. Kennedy.
Yes, so the parent advisory council met for the first time. There was ten of us, and eight were people I had never seen before, so that was exciting. Um, so I wanted to announce the next one, which is on November thirteenth at six thirty in the high school library. There's a new, um, director of it. And, um, one of the questions that came up that I just wanted to say publicly for anyone who needs these minutes is that, um, anyone's welcome to come. Um, you don't need to have a child on an IEP. You can have a child that gets a little literacy support, you can just have children, um, and anyone is welcome to come, and we would love to grow the membership. Um, so we just wanted to.
What was the date in place?
Clarify that, that.
Thirteenth.
November thirteenth, it's a Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Six thirty, high school library. And now.
Mr. DeCantor?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, just, uh, ask the school committee to recognize, um, a retired teacher, but still very active person, uh, who was, um, recognized by the EDC as their bridge builder, uh, last Thursday, talking about John Halloran. Uh, he's done magnificent work for our district, uh, not only, uh, as a longtime teacher here, but also beyond that, uh, as a teacher to teachers, uh, as a mentor and guide, and, uh, certainly, I think, big contribution to our community, is that he was the founder of the Gully, the Gully chapter here in Newburyport, and, uh, that is someone that I think has had, um, you know, a very long-term benefits for our city and will continue to, to generate those. And I'd also like to recognize Angelo for giving a great speech and presenting it, I want to.
And there was a beautiful picture of the two of them on baseball.
I just said, um, we often, you know, we occasionally get turnover here on the school committee, and, um, and sometimes people leave the school committee and they go on to greater success. And I, I was wondering if, uh, if Ms. McCarthy would, uh, would share with us, uh, one of recently school committee members who went on to such, such success.
So, Dan Pion, um, back in, um, Christmas of oh nine, did a video, it's actually been on YouTube for quite a while, and he must have submitted it to America's Funniest Home Videos, and last night he won the ten thousand dollar prize. Congratulations today. It's a video about, um, he, they gave their, his daughter a car for Christmas, and, um, they bought her a nice VW Bug, but they did that, and what they had waiting for in the front yard was a very rundown, full stickers, smelly, dust flies when you turn it on, it barely turns on kind of car, and she, um, it's great video, I think it's called Hannah's Creepy Christmas Car, or something like that. Um, but, um, they won the ten thousand dollar prize, and they'll be able to go back and be in the running for the hundred thousand dollar prize, so.
I love a well-planned prank. Someday I'll tell you the story of the atomic-powered Volkswagen.
Can I hear a motion to adjourn, please? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.